Good morning, everyone. My name is Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. Welcome to our meeting today. Before we begin our official business, we often have special resolutions. And today is timely and important. I'm going to turn the microphone to my colleague, council member Worsami, to read the resolution, which is one for the Minneapolis City Council to stand with the people of Ethiopia right now. And I will let him explain and read the resolution.
Thank you, Madam President. And we also have School Board Director Syed Ali here as well today. And this resolution basically came about because of events that are taking place in the country of Ethiopia. And the resolution goes as— and it's been signed by all my colleagues, so thank you very much to everyone. And the title of the resolution is "Expressing Concern and Condemnation Over the Humanitarian Crisis and Communal Violence in Ethiopia." Whereas the Somali and Oromo ethnic groups have struggled for over a century for their self-determination and have been historically marginalized since the inception of modern Ethiopia. And whereas since 2015, there have been mass demonstrations led by the Oromo and other communities to bring about civil rights, justice, and a more equitable Ethiopia. And whereas Dr. Abi Ahmed Ali was recently appointed Prime Minister of Ethiopia and has articulated a reform agenda centered around love and unity to combat hatred and division. And whereas recently Ethiopia has seen an increase in communal violence, which has resulted in the loss of hundreds of lives and the displacement of thousands of ethnic Somalis and Oromos from their homes. And whereas this continued humanitarian crisis has affected communities notably in Tuliguleid, Babili, Moyaale, Walgo, and many other towns. And whereas the Human Rights Watch in July 2018 published a detailed report about the horrific situation many Somali prisoners encounter at the notorious prison known as Jael Ogaden and discussed the lack of accountability by the Ethiopian government. And whereas the city of Minneapolis is home to the largest concentration of Somali and Oromo communities in the United States, living side by side in peace and harmony. And whereas residents of Minneapolis are alarmed at the ever-increasing death and displacement, continued incarceration of political prisoners, and the mob justice many innocent civilians are facing in Ethiopian cities. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby urge the government of Ethiopia to respect the Somali and Oromo peoples' rights to their land, their self-determination, and to safeguard their human rights and dignity. We call on Prime Minister Dr. Abi Ahmed Ali to take concrete action to immediately halt violence and return all displaced civilians to their homes. This is a resolution that affirms our commitment to human rights and justice. And the reason why this resolution is coming out at this time is because we are honored to have the Ethiopian Prime Minister, and I think the first ever Ethiopian Prime Minister, to visit the Twin Cities. And he's on his way to visit the Twin Cities. And there will be an event on the 30th of July, Tuesday 30th of July. And we thought, and the communities have thought, that this is a very important step to concentrate the new Prime Minister's mind to the importance of the lives of our civilians back in Ethiopia. And this is a message of peace, is a message of love. And I thank my council colleagues and the mayor for signing on to this resolution. And I want to give Mr. Syed Ali some time.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Worsami and other members. Thank you very much, Madam President. The Oromo and the Somali community are brothers and sisters, and they share everything in life. Therefore, it's very important that we have to condemn the violence that's going on in Ethiopia. And this is a great opportunity that the Prime Minister of Ethiopia is visiting us. It's really a noble idea that we share our united voice as a city of Minneapolis, that we care about human rights in East Africa. So thank you very much, council members. And we are very delighted that we are here, standing together for what's right, and that's human rights, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And I—there's a motion as well.
Yeah, we'll do that. Thank you so much. And I just also want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Worsami, for his leadership in fighting for Minneapolis and the United States of America to continue to be a refuge from people who are fleeing this kind of humanitarian crisis and violence. And it's a shame that we have to do so, but we are standing with you and the community in that fight as well. All right. With that, I will call to order our regular city council meeting for July 20th. Again, I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the city council. And I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Present.
Vice President Jenkins is absent. Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
President Bender.
Present.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And I'd like to note for the record that our Vice President, Councilmember Jenkins, is absent from the meeting today because she is participating in the senior executive in state and local leadership program at Harvard's Kennedy School of Government. Or as I like to say, she is at Harvard getting all fancy. And we're very excited to hear what she has learned when she gets back. With that, we'll proceed to the meeting agenda. Well, are there any amendments to today's agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All those in a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the minutes of the regular meeting for June 29th for acceptance. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
That—all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and the minutes are accepted. And finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. Is there a motion to approve those referrals?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and the matters have been referred to the proper committees. So we do have the one resolution today on the agenda, which expresses our support for civil rights for the people of Ethiopia condemning the humanitarian crisis and communal violence happening in that country. Councilmember Worsami has read the resolution. Is there any comment on that? I don't have my speaker management open, so I'm going to relay Schrader for his— Councilmember Worsami.
Madam President, thank you very much. I wish to make a motion. And the motion is to amend the resolution by adding the following resolve clause. Be further resolved that the city clerk be directed to send a copy of this resolution to the Ethiopian Embassy in Washington, DC, the State Department's Africa Desk, and the Minnesota Federal delegation.
Thank you, Councilmember Worsami. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in approval of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and the resolution is adopted as amended. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business, which begins with the reports of our standing committees. We'll begin today with the report from the Committee of the Whole with the Vice Chair of that Committee, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of the Whole brings forward two items to this meeting. The first is a local government amicus brief in Washington State versus United States, authorizing the city to join the local government amicus brief in support of the plaintiffs in the case of Washington State versus United States, and authorizing the city attorney's office to take all necessary steps to join in support of this amicus brief. That is in regards to family separation. The second is 2020 Census, directing the neighborhood and community relations staff to provide progress reports on 2020 census activities and passage of a resolution establishing the Complete Count Committee to serve as an advisory board to the city council on the issues of the 2020 Census. I move approval of these items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the approval of the Committee of the Whole report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 11 items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is an expansion of pet premise for Priors Brewing. Item two is an extended hours license for Starbucks Coffee. Item three is the Innovative and Emerging Small Business Pilot Program. Item number four is a rental license denial for a number of properties. I will—I'm going to actually move to delete that from the agenda because the matter was recommended for dismissal by an administrative law judge. Item five are the liquor license approvals, and six are the liquor license renewals. Seven are the business license approvals, and eight are the business license renewals. Nine are the gambling license approvals, and 10 are the gambling license renewals. And item number 11 is exclusive development rights at the site on 927 West Broadway, which will grant for a period of one to two years exclusive development rights to redevelop that site. With that, I will move items one through three and five through 11 for approval, as well as moving to delete from the agenda item number four.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee's report as excluding item number five. Is there any discussion?
Item number four.
Item number four. Thank you, Councilmember. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Elections and Rules Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam President. Elections and Rules has one item to bring forward. It is the 2018 gubernatorial primary and general election judge appointments. And I will move approval.
Councilmember Ellison has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is a report from the Enterprise Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. There's one item before us that I'd like to move. It's an RFP for staff augmentation for the IT department. It will establish a pool of suppliers to fill temporary staffing needs. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'd like to move that item.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, presented by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is just bringing one thing forward. This is approval of our committee work plan. I encourage my colleagues and others to go look at that, and they can see what we have planned and the timing for maybe some of the issues that they brought forward to work on this year. I'll also note that at the committee, we had an interesting report from the University of Minnesota Center for Urban and Regional Affairs on gentrification in Minneapolis. People might want to look at that as well. But I'm just moving our report today, which is approval of the committee work plan.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from our Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, presented by Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward four items. The first is Neighborhood and Community Engagement Commission appointments of Jeff Stran, Queen Kimmons, and Mary Didoe Swinton. The second is accepting a grant from the Minneapolis Downtown Improvement District for $40,000 for street outreach. The third is approving the council appointment of Lori Campaniola to the Public Health Advisory Committee—excuse me, yeah, Committee appointment. And the last is approving the council appointment of Winthana Melikin and the mayoral appointment of Kate Davenport to the Minneapolis Workplace Advisory Committee. I move approval of these items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee forwards 13 items today for consideration. Item one is the snow and ice removal from public sidewalks. I'll note an amendment to that that's been distributed to move from the proposed assessment the ice removal against property of 3,200 Taylor for the amount listed. And this is due to—we discovered a communication snafu that caused this situation. Item two is 28th Avenue South Street Reconstruction, 58th Street East to the city limit. Item three is the low-power vehicle ordinance. Item four is the contract with Tool Design Group for Vision Zero Action Plan. Item five is the contract amendment with Jurgen Construction Company for the Niklet Mall Art Restoration. Item six is the temporary occupancy permit agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe for the water main repair that we're doing. Item seven is the grant from Hennepin County for the public recycling containers. Item eight is the Metro Blue Line Extension Light Rail Project master funding agreement with the project team. Item nine is the acquisition land from Hennepin County for Stormwater Holding Pond. Item 10 is the Hennepin Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project. That project goes from Lake Street to West 36th Street. Item 11 is the 10th Avenue Southeast River Bridge Project. That's a layout approval and easements. Item 12 is the bid for installation of large diameter cured in pipe for the amount listed. And the final item is the Hennepin Avenue Street Reconstruction Project, and that was a project layout approval. Madam President, I will stand for questions and move all items.
Councilmember Reich has moved the TPW report. We have one question from Councilmember Worsami. Okay, Councilmember Fletcher then.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to talk about item three briefly, the low-power vehicle ordinance. And first, I want to commend Councilmember Reich for his leadership on this. I think it's very important that we actually have an ordinance and that we can actually get this regulated in a way that allows us to make sure that this is both a service that we can explore and something that we are able to regulate to make sure it doesn't become a nuisance in our city. And I think it's—it's a really good thing that we already had something in progress when the first committee came in, so thank you for that. There are some things that this ordinance doesn't do, and I want to just sort of talk about why I'm supportive of passing it anyway, which is that, you know, we needed to get something in place to have a regulatory framework, and then we are going to continue to improve this. The biggest thing that I'm concerned about that this doesn't do yet, and I want to see if we can do it through the contract, and then we'll look at ordinance if we can't do it through our agreements with the providers, is the level of access that it provides. So right now, there's a very high bar for access that excludes a lot of people in our community. You have to have a smartphone, a credit card, and a valid driver's license to use this service. And that combination of things is going to keep a lot of people from benefiting from this mode of transit. And so I want to make sure that as we move forward, we're encouraging all of our vendors to think about, are there ways that we're providing the service that are excluding people? And are there ways that we can improve our service offering so that more people are able to access it? And so I think we'll—we'll want to be working moving forward to think about, should driver's licenses be a requirement? I think they shouldn't be, especially if we're talking about a last-mile solution for transit users. And should we be requiring payment through a mechanism that people who don't have access to banking services are able to access, like GoToCards or something else? So, you know, I think those are things that we're going to pursue in the future. I hope we can get them done in the contract process and in our agreement. But one way or another, I think that's the direction we need to go. I also just want to note, we've received an excessive amount of spam from one of the companies. And I want to really encourage my colleagues to not be moved by that because they shouldn't have a consumer base that they can access through their app because they came in illegally. And I would be very disappointed if there was some kind of a market advantage gained by having jumped the queue by a couple of weeks. There are other companies that want to come in, and I want to make sure that they're all on a fair footing. We're going to come up with a fair agreement that applies to everybody. And frankly, I wouldn't mind if a company came in that had a slightly less buggy app.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a working computer, so I had to use the little red thing. I wanted to comment on item number 13, which is the layout for the Hennepin Avenue Reconstruction Project. In my time on the council, I've seen three iterations of bike lanes on Hennepin Avenue. When I lived on Hennepin Avenue, the bike lanes were in the middle of the street. And when we made Hennepin Avenue a two-way street, the bike lanes moved to the sides of the street. And now finally, after a third iteration, 20-some-odd years later, I believe we're going to get it right this time, and we're going to have bike lanes that are adjacent to the sidewalk. I think this is a safer configuration for everybody who likes to use Hennepin. Hennepin Avenue is our theater district, and in many ways, it's a place where we want pedestrians to congregate, everyone who wants to take transit, people who want to bike, and those who want to patronize all of the businesses along the avenue. I am really impressed with the work of the Public Works Department. Every single property owner was met with multiple times. There's been a lot of community engagement surrounding the project. To have a meeting like this today where there is almost no disagreement about the alignment, I think, is a real victory for Public Works and the work that they've put into doing this project. And so I just wanted to point out, as we move forward on what will likely be a lengthy construction period with utility work even commencing this summer, that in the end, Hennepin Avenue will be safer for people who don't use cars, safer for people who use buses, but most importantly, safer for pedestrians and bicycluses—bicy—bicyclists? Did I get that right? Because of the way that they will not have to fight for space on the road. So I appreciate everyone's support.
Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. And just responding to the great comments from my colleagues. We do have a great framework for both the Hennepin Avenue, and we have a great framework for our policies regarding this new mode in our city. But there is more work to be done. Hennepin Avenue, though it was a very challenging layout, given all the uses that Councilmember Goodman outlined, still needs to be activated. And there's a lot of work about how it gets activated. Niklet, of course, is a very—kind of a jewel in our city. But Hennepin Avenue is that Main Street. You know, it's really where it's happening. And how we do that and how we activate that is something we want to do intentionally. And to Councilmember Fletcher, I think you really laid it out perfectly. A regulatory framework can't just be for how we regulate. It also has to be baked in on agreements, how we aspire to promote the values of our city. And so you just nailed the head, access is one of our top values. So more work to be done. And I also would say that the vendors that have worked with us patiently, that's how you establish a long-term relationship with an enterprise. And we appreciate that, and we'll always remember that. So with that, Madam President, thank you for allowing me to expatiate on the points well made by my colleagues.
Councilmember Ellison.
Just wanted to highlight number eight, which is the Blue Line Extension, the master funding agreement on the Botno Corridor. And just stress that transportation in North Minneapolis is what's going to tie folks to work. It's going to allow folks to be more mobile. It's going to allow folks to be more mobile. And just wanted to highlight my excitement about transportation options coming to North Minneapolis. Thank you.
Great. Are there any more comments on the TPW report? I don't see any. I will note, echoing what Chair Reich and Councilmember Fletcher said, the next step for the low-powered vehicle ordinance will be at TPW just next week on Tuesday, and that will be the license agreement that staff is working out with the companies that have been engaging so far. So if people will be able to review that soon online, and we'll be able to come learn more at that committee meeting next week. All right, thank you. So then, with that, Councilmember Reich has moved TPW agenda with the amendment. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is a report from the Ways and Means Committee chaired by Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee brings forth seven items for council approval. The first item is a legal settlement claims of Thomas J. Mack. The second is a legal settlement claim of Andre Seewell. The third is leases for early voting centers for the 2018 elections. The fourth item is a contract amendment with Messenger Construction Company, Inc., for contract closeout regarding the Convention Center Drinking Fountains replacement project. The fifth item is a gift acceptance for the city staff travel expenses to Ann Arbor, Michigan in September 2018. The sixth item is a contract amendment with Navex Global, Inc., for ethics report line services. The seventh item is a temporary step increase for a principal policy acquisition in the mayor's office, and I move approval of all seven items.
Thank you. Councilmember Worsami has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. And finally, we have the report of the Zoning and Planning Committee chaired by Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. Zoning and Planning will be bringing forward five items for approval today. The first is a vacation resolution correction at 2900 Pleasant Avenue. The second is a rezoning at 1901 Grand Street Northeast. The third is also rezoning at 2510 Riverside Avenue, 2506 Riverside Avenue, and 2514 Eighth Street South. The fourth is a rezoning for 4636 Avenue South. And the fifth is a rezoning for 800 First Street North, 730 and 730 and 1/2 First Street North. I'll stand for questions and move for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader has moved the report of the zoning and planning committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. And finally, we have the report of the Zoning and Planning Committee chaired by Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. Zoning and Planning will be bringing forward five items for approval today. The first is a vacation resolution correction at 2900 Pleasant Avenue. The second is a rezoning at 1901 Grand Street Northeast. The third is also rezoning at 2510 Riverside Avenue, 2506 Riverside Avenue, and 2514 Eighth Street South. The fourth is a rezoning for 4636 Avenue South. And the fifth is a rezoning for 800 First Street North, 730 and 730 and 1/2 First Street North. I'll stand for questions and move for approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader has moved the report of the zoning and planning committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. That brings us to the next order of business, which is the notice of introductions of ordinances, and we have two to give today. The first is from Councilmember Schrader, who gives notice of his intent to introduce at the next council meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code related to regulations for rooftop mechanical equipment, penthouses, and building height. And the second is notice from Councilmember Johnson of his intent to introduce the next council meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending the zoning code related to regulations for lots containing two or more zoning classifications. Are there any questions from council members on either of those notices? Seeing none, those notices are given, and no further action is required. Those will be coming back to the next council meeting. And the next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. So pursuant to notice given at the last meeting, Councilmember Gordon moves to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the city charter related to authority from the Police Department policy, and to refer that matter to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee to finalize the proposal for submission to the Charter Commission. As council members are aware, we had a presentation at the Committee of the Whole where the clerk so beautifully described the history of charter amendments in our city and the process that would come next. And that would be intended to be submitted to the voters as a ballot question in an upcoming election. So under the statute, the council needs to submit the proposal in form of an ordinance to the Charter Commission for its consideration before it can be put on the ballot. So this action today is to formally introduce the ordinance and to give it a first reading as required under the city charter and our rules. And if passed, the ordinance would then be referred to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee the next cycle. So are there any questions from council members on those notices? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to speak to this proposal of introduction. This is my first chance to look at or consider this option in the routing of this proposal specifically to IGR. Thank you, Councilmember Gordon, for mentioning that that was a potential route last week, but I first found this proposed language online late last night. My concern is that, as an elected official who's supposed to be representing residents, I'm not able to represent them without fully understanding what it is we are voting on. I feel we're talking about a fundamental change to our form of government. I'm not afraid of shying away or upsetting the apple cart when that's warranted, but I don't understand the full force of this one. For example, a filing fee charter amendment we spoke about before us for two years before we actually submitted it this way. I've heard my colleagues argue that we're voting today to just allow for the conversation. And I might be persuaded in that fact if I didn't also know this was being rushed through to meet a deadline that is only a month away. In this type of a motion, you are signaling that you like this proposal enough to derail a lot of time and energy and resources to it immediately for the next month. If this had been at all vetted, then today might be normal, a normal introduction to this kind of a major change, and I could vote to have that conversation. But I feel this is bad process. I think it's unacceptable that I'm supposed to make an informed decision and vote even on a referral at this stage when I have no idea how this could practically be implemented. So just to be clear, in so many conversations around the city on public safety, on curbing violence in our communities, and in healing the divide between communities that have been disenfranchised by police over generations of time, I've never heard this brought up as a solution. One of my colleagues mentioned yesterday that this came up last year during his door knocking in Ward 12. I feel he could have brought it up in January, and we could have had this conversation for at least the last six months. You know, people are still worried about not having enough time to comment on a first draft of a 2040 comprehensive plan, and that's been going on a whole lot longer than this. I feel Council Vice President Jenkins raised really important concerns about engagement, and those are process kinds of questions. That's not about whether or not this is a good idea to send to the Charter Commission. So to that end, I need to make sure I understand the plan for implementation. If the author or authors would be willing to field some questions, some that are on my mind are, would council members be able to craft and implement policy for their ward? Or will council as a whole vote on policy for each of our separate wards? That's unclear here. Another example would be in the case of an urgent policing issue affecting Minneapolis. Does the chief need to call 14 council members, gain consensus, and then act? Does he just need to call until he gets seven of us to agree with him? Or does he wait for the normal council cycle to bring this matter forward? From online, from Facebook, Madam President, you yourself said this wouldn't change the procedures or practices in an emergency situation outlined in other parts of the Charter or emergency management statutes. And with all due respect, I've not heard anyone expressing concern that you're proposing to change the mayor's powers during a declaration of emergency, but the only time in recent memory that that's ever happened is during a bridge collapse or a tornado in North Minneapolis. Instead, our concern, my concern, is not over-changing authority during an unprecedented catastrophe or disaster, but rather the high-stakes decisions made by the chief and the mayor regularly where consequences are high, lives might be at risk, but there's immediately public consequences present. Someone challenged me to give an example of that. One example would be if a report is issued that our officers are using an effective law enforcement technique, maybe on Hennepin, which results in a disparate impact on people of color. Maybe we get a call from one of my constituents who doesn't have my phone number, let alone all of our phone numbers. I see the ability for a mayor to effect change about that pretty immediately, and the technique, you know, I think he handles a situation like that. Other examples of what kinds of ways we need to make decisions on that quickly would be during a protest, God forbid during a riot. So first, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this indefinitely. One of my colleagues in yesterday's paper seems to agree that this could be done with a less aggressive timeline, so I would like to make a regular motion to postpone this indefinitely.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, we have quite a few council members in queue to speak to this item, and I would like to make sure that they all get a chance to speak before we take any votes. So...
Procedurally, a motion's been made to postpone indefinitely. A motion requires a second to be entertained.
Okay.
We have a second, so the motion is before the body. We'll open up a second queue in speaker management. Those who wish to speak to the motion on postponing indefinitely would register under that queue. Once that queue is done and that motion is disposed of, we would return to the original queue in order that the speakers have already registered.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So I just want to note again for my colleagues that if you're in the farther left column, you need to add yourself to that second column to be able to speak. Councilmember Schrader.
Sure, I'd like to speak to the motion. I think that's, it's not appropriate to talk about postponing this. The reason this has not been timely is because we haven't acted. And I don't know how else to put this. This has been going on, and we are talking about actual reform that is needed. Maybe this doesn't get this there, but this is the only proposal I've seen in my time here. And to say that this has, we may not have heard about it, we need to look in more into it, I'm getting angry about it. You know, I'm very passionate about this. I think we need to be looking at how we can actually hold police accountable and be accountable to our constituents and to the community. And to postpone this indefinitely, I cannot support that, and we'll be voting against that.
Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. I have been deeply disappointed in the way that this conversation has been rolled out on the council. Each one of us has been elected to represent not only the voters that voted us here, but the variety of people that live in our districts and in our wards. I am heavily concerned about the type of impact that an irresponsible motion that was brought forward without consulting the very head of the department that we're discussing, without consulting the chair of the committee that runs the line of work that Councilmember Jeremy Schrader is critiquing right now. I'm very concerned about how this entire conversation has lacked the inclusion of community, of colleagues, of department staff, of council leadership, as well as our mayor, who currently is in charge of this department that we're speaking about. And I am disgusted by the privilege presented by this move. Because as a woman of color, if I walked into Cal and said, hey, guess what, guys? We're working on rent control today. Gotcha. Sorry, we didn't talk about it, but hey, Andrea, we're working on rent control. Or what if I walked into Cal and I said, hey, guys, guess what? The Department of Economic Development, we're going to abolish that policy that they have against community-based agreements. What do you think about that? Yeah, let's just talk about it right here, right now. The media would eat me alive, council members would eat me alive, staff would eat me alive. I wouldn't be able to walk out of this room. And I know because I've been here for four years. And I know because I've had to have those battles. And I am just so concerned with the fact that currently, we have a variety of tools at our disposal to make changes, and none of those ideas have come to me as chair of the Public Safety Committee. We have a mayor with an open-door policy where literally your badge gets you in his door at any time you want. We have the first African-American leader of our department, who is paroled by our community and folks up and down the police ranks as somebody who gets things done, who responds to community, who's accessible, who listens, who changes. I am confused by this entire approach, by the lack of conversations, by the cyclical nature of the dysfunctionality of the council from last year to here today. And right now, the Latino community, specifically the Latino business community, is in deep, deep state of disarray because of what's happening with Trump and the anti-immigrant agenda, and they feel like no one is listening, like no one is helping. Crime is very challenging in my ward, it's very complex. And that community hasn't been consulted at all on this topic. And I feel like we're creating more chaos in an environment where we already have chaos, and we're trying to mitigate and address what's happening with all the attacks coming from Washington, D.C. And we can't take the time to have a conversation with one another about this. I'm deeply disappointed because this is actually something that I would have been open to had the process that had been put together been inclusive, thoughtful, intentional, welcoming, and not coming off as some political punch. So I will be supporting the motion to continue conversations, to get folks on the same page, to get through the challenges and the tensions that we're having now about this very important issue. Never in my life would I ever bring forward a motion like this in such an irresponsible way that would impact our community members in so many different ways without checking in with the key folks who are leading the charge on this effort.
Thank you. I put myself in queue. And, Mr. Clerk, would it be possible to add Councilmember Worsami under Councilmember Ellison yourselves? He's not in speaker management.
I'm sorry, we cannot add.
Okay. I will just note that I'm going to remember to call in Councilmember Worsami after Councilmember Ellison.
We'll put him under the priority motion for his timer.
Okay, thank you. You know, I just wanted to comment briefly on this motion to postpone the item indefinitely, which I strongly disagree with. I've never voted against a subject matter introduction proposal by a colleague, and I know that our process can feel difficult to follow for an average person, but this really truly is the beginning of a policy discussion for an item in our process. So we do this notice of intent, that there were two earlier on the agenda for much less exciting topics, and then we vote to introduce the item, we send it to a committee for referral, and then people in the city can sort of track the progress of the discussion in a transparent way, so they know what the next steps are. So the next step for this item would be going to the IGR committee for further discussion. Councilmember, if any council member brought an introduction for rent control or another item, I would be very likely to support it because I don't want to stop a discussion before it starts, and this is a very important discussion to have. I think we will be best served if we focus on the governance question before us and not on people or personalities. I was among a group of council members that suggested this last term with a different mayor and a different police chief. And I'll have more to say about the content of this, but at this point, when we're discussing a motion to postpone indefinitely, which creates such a lack of transparency and confusion for anyone who would want to engage on this, I can't support this motion. And then again, like I'll have more to say about the actual motion that Councilmember Gordon has, when hopefully we decide not to postpone this indefinitely. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I appreciate Councilmember Conno saying that she was open to continuing discussion so that we could get to some kind of consensus and better understanding and have this dialogue. I apologize if somehow my action was offensive to anybody in bringing this forward. To Councilmember Palmasano, the language that's posted online is the same thing that I dropped off in your office shortly after Committee of the Whole. I gave you two versions of the potential language, and I said I preferred this one, and so you did see it then, and that's the same thing that we talked about then, and I appreciate that you're opposed to it, but I did try to get the word out. This is actually something that I've talked about, I think I've written about it, there's an article in South Side Pride that was something like 2010, certainly brought it up after Jamar Clark last term, talked about it as an idea. I think that I was struck at Committee of the Whole when we were listening to everybody once again coming to the council and saying, could you please do more? Could you please lean in? Could you please take on the challenge and try to help develop and guide policy with the Police Department so that we can help make sure that everybody is safer in our city? And I brought the idea up publicly and openly at a meeting when we were all here. Some people responded to it, some people responded to it favorably. That was three weeks before, and actually, that was a few days before I would even have to give notice of intent. And that's the way we do things around here. We have a new idea we want to try out, we're going to bring it to the council, we notify everybody ahead of time. And I actually notified people at Committee of the Whole and the mayor that I might bring it up at the committee as a notice, so that they knew. And then we had a three-week time. And actually, it's been pretty amazing. This is an idea that obviously has sparked the attention of our community, and we've already started engaging in a bigger dialogue about what does it mean? Where does this archaic thing come from that gives the mayor full power and command and control over the Police Department? And lo and behold, there was actually a line like that in the 1870s in the first charter of the city, only we had a police commission board that the mayor sat on. So there's a history about this. And I think there's such an urgency and such a desire to talk about this idea that it would be ridiculous to shut it off now, and I'm not sure how that's a healthy process for the community or for anybody. So I hope that we can at least move it forward so we can bring it to Intergovernmental Relations. And I'm encouraging the chair of that committee to take some community input on it. I mean, I've been around here a long time. We get to bring ideas, we have election certificates, we bring them forward. If we don't have seven votes, they're going to stop, and we'll see. But this is even bigger than that, and the engagement could be potentially much larger because all I'm asking is the opportunity to put it on the ballot so democracy can make a decision about it, and we can have a discussion. So I hope that we'll move forward on that. Also, if we move forward, it would help me answer some of the questions that Councilmember Palmasano posed, that she wanted to know answers for. Well, it's pretty hard to answer them. I think that the simplest answer is to say, think of how it is with the Fire Department, with Public Works, with the city coordinator, with the city attorney, with regulatory services, with every single other department. That's how things would be managed. We would expect the department head to take action. Maybe they'd confer if they had time with the mayor, the council president, the committee chair, maybe they wouldn't. The police chief would certainly have all the authority and ability to respond to any kind of emergencies that they have now based on the policies that we've already set. Oh, that's right, based on the policies that the police chief and the mayor have set, because the council doesn't get to set those policies. Also, I think it's, I'm not sure what the rhetorical device is, but acting as if all council members would be able to adopt policies for their wards, if we do that with Public Works and the Fire Department and anything else, I suppose we could decide we get to do that. The alderman's privileges, I think, went away decades ago, and that's not my intention at all. I don't think that's why it's government, and I don't think that would happen. And I suspect there's probably a lot more questions. I think there's probably a lot more thoughts and feelings that the people of Minneapolis have about this idea, community members, and engaging them, and I look forward to having that discussion after we hopefully vote down this motion to postpone indefinitely.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam President. My constituents in Ward 5, many of them, you know, no ward is a monolith, but many of my constituents in Ward 5 do expect me to be able to respond to concerns about police. And when the reality is, is that we actually don't have that much power to respond to our constituents in that way, that's not what I signed up to do. I didn't sign up to not take ownership and responsibility for what happens in the city. And, you know, I think that through this process, we can shape and hash out the specifics of this policy and what it would entail. But I'd like to make sure that as we have a conversation, that we have a conversation about the policy, right? And I don't find it appropriate for, you know, members of this body to question the motives of other council members, the intentions of other council members. I don't find that appropriate. I find that we should discuss the merits of the policy and not get into personality politics. So, a yes vote is a vote to stop discussing and vote on the question right now, and no vote is to continue to discuss.
I vote no.
Reich. Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are nine ayes and three nays.
So, that motion passes in order to call the question on Councilmember Palmasano's motion to postpone indefinitely the subject matter introduction that Councilmember Gordon has proposed today. On that question, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Excuse me, just to clarify, we're voting on whether or not to postpone this indefinitely. So, this is about continuing the conversation but not moving it forward at this time.
I believe we suspended discussion of the motion, and we need to vote on the motion.
Madam President, the motion that I'm calling the roll on is whether or not to postpone the question indefinitely.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
No.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
No.
Ellison.
No.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
President Bender.
No.
There are seven ayes and five nays.
There are seven. The motion to postpone indefinitely has failed. That brings us back to the original motion, which again is a subject matter introduction that Councilmember Gordon has brought today. Councilmember Cunningham is next in queue to discuss the underlying motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be voting in favor of the motion to refer this item to IGR, but I would like to be very clear about why. When I campaigned, I was always clear that I would be an evidence-based policymaker, and I have adhered to this core value since taking office. Today's vote is not to put this question on the ballot this year, just to begin the legislative process and conversation about what a more transparent, accountable governance of policing could look like. My constituents call me all of the time and say, "Do something about the police," whether that's about police misconduct or response times, or folks will call and say, "Do something for the police" in terms of putting systems and structures in place that support officer wellness, for example. Truth be told, there are very, very few mechanisms, if any, for me as a council member, Northside council member, to do anything except for make threats with the budget, which goes against my deep respect for Chief Arredondo. I will be voting yes today because I support the city council having legislative authority over the police department, legislative, not executive. We are not talking about 14 people with executive authority over the police department. We're talking about what many other cities, including Seattle and New York, have done or have, which is a more transparent legislative process for making policy changes in how their police department operates. I would like to emphasize the lack of interest in being involved in the daily operations of the police department, which I'm pretty sure is shared by all of my colleagues. I have heard from my constituents who feel very passionately for or against a charter amendment, and I hear and share much of the same excitement and concerns about such a change. I am not voting yes today because I think amending the charter is the right way to achieve what we are seeking to achieve here. I am voting yes because I will be continuing to work closely with the Civil Rights Department to do in-depth research about what other cities are doing to increase transparency in their policing policymaking process. That work might not lead to any charter change, but all solutions should be explored. With that information, then I will be informed enough to make a decision one way or the other. While something this high stakes has, of course, become politicized and who's on whose team, so I want to make myself very, very clear, I am on no one's team except for Northsiders, and I will always put good policymaking and my people before politics. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Madam President. I really appreciate Councilmember Cunningham's comments and agree with a great deal of what was said. This is a vote to continue the conversation, and I think it would be odd to say, "We haven't had enough conversation, so we should vote to shut down conversation or to postpone it," in that way. I think we can move it forward. I am pretty skeptical, and I've told Councilmember Gordon that we're going to get it done on the timeline, you know, that we get it to this year's ballot. I think there is a lot of conversation to be had, but I think starting the conversation, knowing that we're not going to force it, we're going to do this in a way that gets us to good policy, is the right thing, and I'm not going to vote for anything moving forward that doesn't reaffirm the mayor's executive power. I think it's very, very important that there be a very clear chain of command when decisions need to be made in day-to-day operations. I think that's a very important principle of government, that we've all elected a mayor to be in the room where it happens when we're making decisions, and I think that's very important. I also think that debating these things in this room where the public is present, where the press is present, where we're broadcast on local cable is a very important thing, and I think that helps restore trust. And so, I think regardless of whether I think this was introduced in exactly the right way, and I have some critiques in Councilmember Gordon, I think I've told you privately, I think you probably should have talked to the mayor and talked to Councilmember Conno before getting this moving, but I think that's correctable, and I think our job as policymakers is to look at the policy merits, is to look at, is there a good idea here that we should be debating and that we should be debating out in the open where the public can see us do it and can understand why this does or doesn't pass? So, I'll be voting in support of the introduction.
Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I won't belabor the points. I very much appreciate Councilmember Cunningham's kind of conversation about this, and I'm very much in the exact same spot. For me, it really is about accountability. It really is about how are we responsive to community members. I think that this issue has, and by issue, I mean the police shooting of citizens of Minneapolis. I think I don't want that to get lost, that this is extremely serious and that things have to be moving and that the city council needs to have more policy levers to hold the police accountable, to help reform what's already there with folks that are interested in making that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano has put herself in queue to make a priority motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a priority motion, and I'll pass that out now. Just to be clear, a motion to postpone was a mention to continue the conversation. Doesn't mean we're not going to keep talking about it, but we're not ready to yet bring it forward to the very important charter part of the process. I'm not here to give you a laundry list on the things I feel that we've done in policing over the last year as councilmembers, but I think that this substitute introduction might capture the spirit of some of the things that my colleagues have said. It talks about talking about it more at the Committee of the Whole where everyone can participate. It talks about moving this to the Committee of the Whole to allow study, review, and input from all councilmembers and to invite feedback specifically from the public. I'd like to speak on that if that's all right.
Councilmember Palmasano, thank you. Mr. Clerk, is a substitute motion a priority motion?
No, Madam President. A substitute is a form of amendment and comes when there's no other motion pending on the floor or discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So, I'd be happy to consider this, but I do want to continue the discussion on the underlying motion from Councilmember Gordon. So, Councilmember Palmasano could make this substitute amendment while she's in queue?
Yes, she's in queue under the regular motion for introduction referral calendar, and she could certainly bring it forward then.
Thank you. So, I've put myself in queue next, and I would like to speak to the underlying motion from Councilmember Gordon. I support Councilmember Gordon's subject matter introduction. Again, as I said earlier, I know that our process has a lot of this sort of jargony terms, but I actually find it to be very helpful and transparent to announce before we plan to make a policy change even begin, which is called notice of intent, and then to do the subject matter introduction, which then alerts folks in the city that we're considering an idea, be it zoning change, a change to our complete streets policy, or any other type of policy that the city council has the authority to adopt. And then it is referred to the committee for our staff to begin work on it, and then any proposal often has informal public engagement, our staff does public engagement, and has a public hearing where the folks from across Minneapolis and any stakeholder can come and speak, and that would happen at multiple stages during this kind of process because, again, this is a proposal to begin the conversation about whether or not to give the voters of Minneapolis the choice to make this change, and this would be the most direct form of democracy we could imagine presenting to the people of Minneapolis. I want to say that to the folks who've been engaging after police violence and after shootings, I know that this change is not enough, and it does not even begin to address the pain in our community. I want to say that my constituents have been contacting me for the past four and a half years, asking me to do more on policing, and the fact is, the city council does not have policy authority over our police department under the city charter. And I think Councilmember Gordon has examples from the past where he's moved policy through the council that then did not get implemented because of this charter rule in our city. And I think it is worth having the conversation about whether or not our constituents want us to be able to make policy over the police department. So, this isn't about some list of policies that this mayor wants support. It is about changing the process to create more civilian oversight, more citizen involvement, and more transparency and clarity about how police policy decisions get made. Because right now, what happens is the mayor goes into a back room and asks the police chief nicely to make a change, and they may or may not. And we know from the past, and I hate to drag this up, but former Mayor Ryback tried to remove a police chief and was overridden by the city council. We have a lot of lack of transparency and authority in our current command chain, and again, that is not about any particular chief or mayor. It is baked into our system of government, and I think that the people of Minneapolis deserve a chance to weigh in on how this system of government is working for them or not. I don't see how we could have a more transparent or involved process than the one that Councilmember Gordon has proposed. I've never voted against subject matter introduction to stop a piece of work that a colleague has brought forward before it has even began, and I won't do that in this case. I appreciate that all of the work that these councilmembers, that the mayor and our police chief are doing in this time. This is not the first time that this has been brought up as a proposal. It's not the first time that I have supported it, so that is what I have to say. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to admit, procedurally, I'm a little bit confused. Do we have to then go into the other queue on the motion? A substitute motion is what I would like to offer, and that's before you now. I see it now. Great. So, if I may speak to this motion, I appreciate these things that my colleagues are saying. I think that we all deserve to have an opportunity to weigh in. I'd like to have a real conversation about what's day-to-day going to be the responsibilities of council then versus the mayor's office, and I think it is fundamentally irresponsible to put something on the ballot or to look to change our charter without a really healthy, long discussion of it. That's why I had moved to postpone, and that is why I think that maybe this better captures the positions of my colleagues before you. The substitute introduction helps me to answer another question that I have for the authors of this amendment, which is what are your plans for policy changes? Because I would assume that the authors would not be bringing forward this fundamental change to the charter unless they have changes they would like to make as to how the chief is running his department. Given the high stakes of public safety, I would assume they'd also be working with the mayor on these changes already. I'm not sure if the author has any proposals he can share with us and what the reception from the mayor has been to these proposed changes. Questions that I just have in my head are, what policies do you want to implement? I think we've made a lot of progress in the last year. We're not done. We have a lot of ideas coming forward. Do you still plan to do that if you're successful here without talking to the chief and the mayor, is what I wonder? Another big problem here is we don't even know the scope of this. Different colleagues supporting this today have put out statements online differing from one another about the scope of control here. So, to me, discussing the practicality of how anything like this might work before rushing forward is imperative. I can't ask someone to vote on something they have no idea what it is, and neither can I. Perhaps all of my fellow councilmembers need to lay out their policing plans. That would be a way to hold ourselves accountable. If we're diffusing control amongst 14 people, we cannot ask people to vote on something that they don't know about us. I've been equally as transparent as I have here for several years now, but I'd have to get my own together as well. I disagree with some of my colleagues' statements that our current operations preclude a policy role. The simple fact that we approve a chief and a budget fly directly in the face of that. We have oversight. Today, we have oversight, not control. It's indirect, but we've done some great things. For example, a separation ordinance that really talks about how police can go and approach a member of our community, what they can and can't say has given some of our immigrant communities, I know, great comfort as to how our MPD are there to help them and not be an arm of immigration control or enforcement. On this note, I still don't know what do you want to do, because the only thing I know, or that we know, about some of the people talking about this is that last year, in an election year, they said they wanted to envision Minneapolis to be a place without police. They signed a candidate questionnaire about it. Now, they want more control over the police. The runner-up for mayor, a candidate many of my colleagues said they were putting on the ballot, said he wanted to disarm the police. So, we deserve to know exactly what all councilmembers want to do with this newfound power over the department if they get it, because if this is a step to disarm police altogether or abolish the apartment, get rid of the department, that's a conversation we really need to have, but I find this talk of process disingenuous if it masks a broader agenda. And by the way, I sign up for our chief's plan of disarmament, sending people that he calls community navigators to more things that officers don't really need to go to for full expansion of our mental health co-responder model across the city that we've all been contacted twice this week from constituents in different places lobbying us to try and expand. Let's spend more time on that together. Let's work. I'm really interested in working on a different model for public safety. But the charter moves like this, I fear, would paralyze the vision of our new chief. I think we need to give him a chance. I think we need to work with him. This would allow us to put together a robust set of policy ideas. It would make our policy ideas maybe come to the forefront here. If you've got a great idea, I'm so eager to hear it, but first-rushing charter language is a distraction for this. Voting for its introduction signals that you like this proposal before you even know what it's about, and that's why I submit a substitute introduction before you today. Thank you.
Okay, we have a number of councilmembers in queue on the substitute motion. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I find this substitute motion really interesting to try to direct this to Committee of the Whole, because I remember when there was a previous introduction for the city attorney's reappointment that was suggested to go to Committee of the Whole, and I actually sided with the author of this substitute introduction in making sure that that went to her committee, because I don't think we should pick or choose when there happens to be a big topic trying to direct it away from its home committee into a committee of the whole. Everybody, all my colleagues are welcome at intergovernmental relations to be a part of this process. I welcome public feedback as well. I hope my colleagues vote against this substitute introduction. I think we need to be consistent with where we send these items and consistent with our own rhetoric, and I will therefore call to question on this. I think we've had enough discussion on having a discussion.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, I have really lost my voice, so I'm struggling to speak. Councilmember Gordon has moved to call the question, I'm sorry, Councilmember Johnson has moved to call the question. On the substitute motion, is there a second? There's a second. Clerk, just for the math reasons, we'll call the roll on the motion to call the question. But then, this is a motion to decide whether or not to stop discuss, yes means stop discussing and vote on the motion.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami is absent. Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and that brings us back to the vote on the motion with no further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll on Palmasano's substitute motion.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
No.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami is absent. Cunningham.
No.
Ellison.
No.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
President Bender.
No.
There are four ayes and seven nays.
That motion fails. That brings us back to the underlying subject matter referral, and Councilmember Johnson is next in queue for that.
Thank you, Madam President. For the people watching, normally this is a formality. Normally, we have introduction of notice, and these topics go on to committee, and that's where the discussion happens. I think there's been a lot of great points raised today, questions about what the proposal is by my colleagues, and that deserves to be discussed in committee. That deserves to be heard. We deserve to be able to look at this proposal and even talk about things like the timeline on it. I know there was concerns around some council members might not want the responsibility for policymaking around the police department. There's even been the thought of, well, does this get enacted then in the next term, allowing council members to fulfill their current term with their current responsibilities around this? And we do these notice of intents all the time, and I agree, this one's a pretty big topic. And so, you know, ideally, you do a lot of legwork up front on it. I know that the author of this introduction has specifically apologized for that and said he'd like to do some things different. But I also disagree with this idea that these process complaints, even though the process is imperfect, I disagree with the thought that this wouldn't have happened if on day one of this new council taking office that we turned around and did this introduction and this notice. So I think we need to have this conversation. I think we need to continue it. And really, all of this discussion today has been about starting a discussion. And so with that, I think I'm going to call the question as well on this item.
I'd like to.
Councilmember Johnson has called the question on the subject matter introduction brought by Councilmember Gordon. That needs a second. There has been a second. I want to note that we've been joined by Mayor Fry. We will be voting now on whether or not to call the question and discussion and vote on the subject matter introduction. Clerk, please call the roll on that motion.
Councilmember Palmasano.
I'm sorry, I need a clarification of what we're voting on, the actual Gordon's introduction.
The motion I'm calling the roll on now, Madam President, is to close discussion or further comment or debate on the question and immediately vote on the introduction proposed by motion by Gordon to introduce this and refer it to IGR. So this is a motion to close debate and vote.
No.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
No.
Reich.
No.
Fletcher.
No.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are seven ayes and five nays.
That carries, and that brings us back to the underlying motion with no further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll on the subject matter introduction as outlined in our agenda.
The chief clerk has advised me, and she is correct. A motion to close debate would require a two-thirds vote for approval, and we had seven and two-thirds, with 12 members present, and it's eight, so it fails by one motion or one vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for your math assistance. That brings us back to discussion on the underlying motion, and Councilmember Kano is in queue. I'll note that we've been joined by Mayor Fry.
Thank you, Madam President. Just curious if the mayor should be allowed to speak now, or would you like me to go first, and then? I'm not sure how.
We have a couple of more councilmembers in queue who've been waiting to speak. My intention was to invite the mayor to speak after the list of councilmembers was completed. Is that okay?
Okay, now I see him in the queue. So thank you for that clarification, Council President. So I guess just a couple of things that I just wanted to respond to. When I wasn't consulted on this idea, it's not because I'm taking it personal, it's because I represent about 30,000 people and work with a wide range of folks who have a lot of different experiences with public safety and crime in our neighborhoods, and I'm very aware and sensitive to all of those different dynamics. So I just wanted to clarify that. When I wasn't engaged on this issue, I felt like my community was being erased from the I did get a chance to attend the local progress conference that happened here, and I think there was about six or seven of us councilmembers that were there, and I was the only one that attended the police reform conference workshop. And it was really good to be able to be in a room with people talking about these issues together and working on these initiatives in a collaborative way. While I still have a lot of questions about what the intent and actual impact of this kind of motion is, you know, I don't feel like I have the data in front of me, I don't feel like I have the information in front of me to even have like a cohesive conversation about what it is that we're presenting. And partly, it's because maybe I'm biased, and I do believe that we have a lot of power in what our police department does, and I can see the work that a lot of different councilmembers have advanced on that front, whether it's, you know, Councilmember Palmasano working on body camera issues, whether it's Councilmember Fletcher looking at, you know, surveillance and transparency issues, whether it's me working with MPD to address commercial sexual exploitation and the opioid crisis, which our mayor has supported and prioritized this year. I do not feel disabled in any way to make changes and to deliver strong police reform to our community. And I just want to say that I've had a big learning opportunity through this discussion to understand and see that our committee perhaps needs more of my guidance in ushering through some of the ideas that people might have in their head that they want to put into practicality. And I've been doing that over the last couple of days, it's just after the dust settled from the original introduction of this discussion. I've been reaching out to folks in the committee just to reaffirm that we have very robust tools in place to make significant impact and that we should be taking advantage of those things and just asking the question of what do I need to do to make sure that folks hear that message clearly, that we're putting time, energy, thinking, and I guess commitment to that. So the committee, again, that I chair and that I've been leading for the past six months, started very aggressively with a community engagement agenda that took a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of energy, that I think is perhaps not valued as much as it should be. My staff worked very hard on this, and we engaged hundreds of people in public safety conversations that have never been done before on the city council. We had department heads from almost all levels of our institution present and active and engaged with our community members, and we were working towards aligning those voices with our committee's work plan and our council's strategic planning, which we have still yet to do. So I don't want to put the cart before the horse on that front. And then just in terms of like the responsibility issue of, you know, what this change would mean for the future of the committee and so forth, I would just appreciate it if people would be humble and realize that if you haven't sat on the public safety committee before, you may not know a lot about how this work actually moves day-to-day. If you're not chairing the committee, you probably don't know how hard it's been to just meet once a month instead of twice a month and try to really, you know, we're essentially working with a bottleneck where there's so much information coming in at a very fast rate, and we just don't have enough meetings throughout the year to really tackle those things. So what we're doing is looking at, can we meet twice a month? Are there other initiatives that we can start to really divide up the work between the councilmembers and the committee to ensure that everyone's pulling their weight and really championing an effort or initiative that they can deliver on, and the committee is a place to do that? So I think that that brings me to my point, which is I would really love to see the public safety committee involved in the codification of this initiative. So I'm wondering if my colleagues would be willing to support a motion to add the public safety committee to this next step in this conversation. I appreciate Councilmember Palmasano's motion to try to make it to the committee of the whole so that we can have our council vice president present and actively involved in shaping this initiative. I understand that motion failed, so I would like to make a motion to support the language that we have in addition to adding the public safety in a joint meeting with IGR to continue the conversation, to have the committee members and the committee workload that represents this body of work be a part of it. I think that would be a natural connection. It might be a good way to reconcile some of the differences that we're having in the approach that has been chosen to lead this conversation. So with that, you know, I would like to make that motion, to amend the language, to include a joint meeting with IGR and public safety as you see it here before you.
Councilmember Kano has moved to amend the subject matter introduction. I do see Councilmember Gordon talking with a clerk. Is there a second on the motion? There's a second. Mr. Clerk, maybe you could clarify for us since there seems to be a lot of discussion. And then I think maybe Councilmember Gordon, we could hear from you as well about the process going forward through our committees before this would come back to the council. So could you just, I know that we spent a good long time on this at Cal, but perhaps you could help us remember what will happen at the committees. Usually, it's just a staff direction on a consent agenda, but what actions would need to be taken, and then I don't know if Councilmember Gordon wants to weigh in on the committee assignment.
Madam President, this is, as you noted, the first official process that goes into a procedure with an ordinance. Although it is usually a pro forma, as several members have noted, it is the first opportunity for a member of council, if successful, to remove an item. You have to think of the legislative process as a conveyor belt. If an idea is put on, the de facto process is that it will go forward. So the introduction is the first time to take an idea off that conveyor belt. So the introduction is a normal motion. It's open to debate. It's open to amendment, as we've been going through that process today. Again, appreciating it's not normally done. Under those rules, the council refers the ordinance to the committee that has subject matter jurisdiction. We had decided, you, the council, had decided as part of its organization this year that the subject matter committee is the intergovernmental relations committee. So matters that relate to the charter, to charter amendments, or to the charter commission are routinely referred by the president to the intergovernmental relations committee. That does not mean that, of course, this body could not decide to refer it to either a joint meeting of multiple committees or to a serial number of committees in order if they chose to do that. So that's up to the council to decide how the referral is done. Once it gets referred to a committee or multiple committees, those committees then are in charge of reviewing and perfecting the proposal that is the subject matter of an ordinance in a manner where it can be referred back to the council. The introduction today counts under the charter as the first reading. The charter requires two readings of every ordinance, so today, we are giving it its first reading if the motion to introduce passes. At the committee level, the committee is charged with refining the proposal, putting it in a form that can come back to the full council for its second reading under the charter and, at that time, potential action. Public engagement in this council's process is done at the committee level, as you know, so the committee would be responsible for conducting a public hearing and allowing for input from the community at that stage, prior to coming back for its second reading to the full council. Because it's an ordinance, every official act of the council is then subject to the mayor's consideration. The mayor has essentially two choices, to either approve it or to allow it to become effective without signature, or to disapprove it. If the mayor disapproves, then it comes back to the city council at its next regular meeting, and the council, by a two-thirds vote of its entire membership, can override the mayor's veto to go ahead and enact the ordinance if they so choose. So at this point, with that long-winded introduction, the purpose of today's introduction is to give it its first reading, an official requirement under the charter, and to refer it to that committee with subject matter jurisdiction or to whatever combination of committees you choose so that it can proceed down the path towards being considered formally by the council and going through the rest of the legislative process. The difference in this particular case is because this ordinance is proposing to amend our city charter, our constitution. That is under state statute, not just under the council rules and not just under our charter. Whenever you're proposing to amend the charter, you must send it to the charter commission. So in addition to your normal process, you would have to refer this after the committee formulates the final form of its ordinance to the charter commission for its consideration. The charter commission has the option of either approving the proposal you submit to them and referring back that, yes, they think that this is a good proposal and should go on the ballot. The charter commission can reject that proposal and say, no, they don't think it's a good idea. Or the charter commission can develop a substitute proposal that it thinks is a better proposal and send it back to the council. No matter what the charter commission does, it's up to this body to either submit its original proposal to the ballot, the proposal submitted by the charter commission as a substitute, or you could take other action at that time. But that's down the line. At this point, we're at the very beginning stages of that process.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have Councilmember Palmasano and then Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to speak in support of Councilmember Kano's amendment here. I do appreciate that at least the subject matter where this is, at least the subject matter committee is being involved in the natural process, which would then be for charter amendments to go to IGR. I have a number of additional questions about the merits of this proposal, but as it was earlier pointed out, because we're at this point, I'll save those for the future, too. I would like to say, however, and be on the record, that many of the arguments I've heard today from my colleagues supporting this change feel misguided. First, there is no world in which this change enhances accountability. Right now, there's one person held accountable for policing in our city. He's sitting right next to me. The mayor, no matter where you live, is responsible for the functioning of our police department. One of his primary responsibilities is to work with the chief to implement their collective vision. Every four years, residents of Minneapolis get to weigh in on the work that he or she has done. Diffusing that power and that responsibility to 13 policymakers necessarily diffuses accountability, and I don't see that it's possible to say otherwise. We, as councilmembers, may not be able to be held accountable to our constituents for police, but that's not the point. They have the power to hold one common person accountable across the city, and it is the only person in the city who they are all allowed to vote for. He's waiting very patiently in queue to finish all of our thoughts here. So right now, we just, I need to know who's in charge and responsible. With this change, the buck stops where? The buck stops where with this proposal? And I'll just leave it at that.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to this particular amendment, even though I'm eager and anxious to debate and discuss all of Councilmember Palmasano's interesting ideas that she's raised previously. And now, hopefully, there'll be time to do that as this moves forward. I don't see any problem with having some kind of a joint meeting. I actually think it's a good move that another committee could review it as long as it can fit in the timeline. I have to confess to everybody that I've worked pretty hard looking at the calendar and to make sure that with approval today, there is still an opportunity to get this on the ballot. I actually met with the charter commission and spoke to them about it to give them a warning ahead of time, and the chair committed having a special meeting after the council acts, because they don't look at anything until the council actually approves some language, as our clerk demonstrated. So I think with the assumption that the public safety committee could meet with intergovernmental relations on August 1st, the chair could just call a special meeting, they could both hear everything, they could be there together, they could each vote separately as their committees on what the recommendation going forward is. I don't have any objections to that. I guess we could hear from the chair of IGR to see if he has any objections, but I just thought this is a nice tip of the hat, a nice reaching out of the hand to say, yep, let's work on this together and see if we can come up with something in the end on August 3rd, for example, that actually gets us 13 votes, and the mayor smiles about and says, yeah, I can live with that. Let's work together and make sure we have the best police department that we can for the people of Minneapolis.
I have a request from the mayor to speak. I didn't realize we were going to have so many substitute motions and discussion on those, so I would like to invite Mayor Fry to speak. This is, we're still discussing Councilmember Kano's amendment to move this to a joint committee meeting, but please feel free to speak to that greater question.
Thank you, Council President. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak. I will not address today the substance of the underlying introduction. I think I've made my points several times and articulated my viewpoint that this is most certainly a bad decision. What I will say is that I have the sincere desire to collaborate. Councilmember Gordon mentioned just a second ago that we need to be working together, and I agree entirely. and I agree entirely. The very first day in office, I made certain that every council member had access on a daily basis to my office, access on a daily basis to collaborate, to communicate, and to work together. I continue to have that sincere desire, sincere desire to carry out our responsibilities as, as public servants in a responsible fashion. Sadly, in this case, I do not believe that those efforts were made. Prior to the committee whole, committee of the whole meeting, when this topic was brought up, and several council members took positions from the very beginning, our office was not informed. The chief of police was not informed. This is a nearly unprecedented move that changes the department structure that has been in place for about 100 years. This is a move that has not been taken in this fashion by any other city in the entire country, and is a, it is a move that should be thoroughly considered and thoroughly thought through. I continue to have that sincere desire to collaborate with all of you. I want to work together, and I look forward to hopefully doing that in the future. Sadly, I do not believe that that mission and that desire was there from the beginning on this particular, on this particular issue. So again, I look forward to working with you, and hopefully, we can improve this process in the future.
Thank you, Mayor Frye. So, okay, so we are back to discussing Councilmember Kano's amendment. I heard some discussion about the, maybe the specifics of it. I could recognize Councilmember Kano. Who's next in queue?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just chatting here with Councilmember Gordon about the possibilities here. So, maybe, I feel like we're putting our clerk's office on the spot a lot. So here's, let me explain my intent, and then let me ask the clerk for some clarification, and then I'd be happy to work with, with ways that we can meet the intent. My intent is to have the Public Safety Committee have a codified and significant role in this process. Because this is being sent to IGR, you know, I don't, I don't feel like I'm, we're meeting that goal. So I'm just curious. The, the intent of my motion was to respect Councilmember Gordon's timeline, which is, you know, IGR would be meeting on August 1st. So my, my suggested language to amend the motion that's before us is to have a joint meeting, or perhaps more correctly, correctly stated, to have the Public Safety Committee call for an official meeting that meets with IGR on August 1st. I believe that's the time that we're looking at, August 1st. And so that, the idea is that both committees are meeting at the same time. We're hearing the same information. We're able to participate together. We're asking questions. We're receiving the same amount of information at the same time. Now, what does that mean for actions that can be taken? That's kind of a question I have for a clerk, if there's any issues with quorum, with voting, that sort of thing. But, but again, if my intent can be met in other ways, I'm happy to entertain those things and would actually appreciate direction from the council leadership on some, some of this idea. If you don't think that PSEM has a role in this, then, you know, we can just say that and take a vote on the original motion and, and go from there. But if I could please have the clerk's help in answering some of those questions.
Madam President, I understand the question is, what is the effect of calling a special meeting of the Public Safety Emergency Management Committee at the same time, so that they're meeting jointly with the Intergovernmental Relations Committee to jointly consider the proposal being referred to them? The effect of that, that motion, if passed, would be that you are having two separate committees meeting at the same time. Both committees would have to have a quorum of their members present in order for those meetings to continue. At the end of that meeting, any actions taken are taken separately by the two committees and would require the normal majority vote to move anything forward from each of those committees. I have quickly looked at the membership. I believe that the membership only has one crossover. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee is chaired by Councilmember Johnson and includes the Vice President Jenkins, Councilmember Schrader, Worsami, Council President Bender, and Councilmember Reich. The Public Safety Emergency Management Committee is chaired by Councilmember Kano and includes councilmembers Fletcher, Cunningham, Palmasano, Council Vice President Jenkins, and Councilmember Ellison. So there is one member who crosses between both. Assuming that we have a quorum and assuming that the committees act, if they take the same exact action, then that action is what the two committees would jointly be referring back to the council for the council's consideration at its next regular meeting, following the August 1st joint meeting of the two committees to be considered. If, however, there is disagreement between the committees, then both reports would be forwarded to the council. It would be the effect of a committee not taking action. So the action of both of those committees would be forwarded to the full council, and the full council would then have to decide which of the committee recommendations to move forward at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you for the clarification, and I believe that if there is some kind of separate, if there are separate actions taken at that, at that, at those committee meetings that are meeting at the same time in the same place, I think the council meeting that follows those two committees would then be a place to reconcile some of those differences. You know, this is assuming there are differences. So I like to be optimistic, and I like to think that we're going to keep trying to work together better and that we're going to try to find that common ground. So, so I would still like to keep the, the language of having the first reading and referral at, with a joint meeting between IGR and PSEM on, I believe, August 1st is the date that folks are, are meeting next for IGR. And the intent is really to try to get more, a more cohesive conversation about this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I will, I support this motion, so I will be voting in favor of it. But I would like to ask my colleagues to please stop leaning into a lazy narrative that we as progressives who would like to make change in the police department are somehow silly misguided progressives who don't understand how things work. I have heard judgments of questioning merit, saying misguided, just don't understand, and I have to say that that is incredibly insulting, particularly when wards four and five are completely being decimated with trauma, and we understand that firsthand. And we also have really gotten a handle on the system here. So it's very insulting to lean into this lazy narrative that we just don't understand what's going on. When my community comes to me with this trauma, I really do not have the tools to be able to make the kind of changes. As of right now, I, we as a council, we do not have the authority to say, before a city employee can be issued a gun, we, that person has to go through this training, this training, this training, and this training. We don't have the authority to do that. Sure, we can say we won't give you $250,000 for six more navigators, but that's not the kind of relationship that I want to have with a chief that I deeply, deeply respect. And so I just wanted to call that out and put that out here, because the North Side has been a little bit quieter in this conversation, and to assume that we just are uninformed is very insulting. So I would like to, again, say that this is, I am advocating for this work because we need to have this conversation, because my community is traumatized, and I don't have to know all of the specifics of what that looks like right now for us to begin that conversation to get there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember. I was actually going to similarly just remind my colleagues to just please try to stay respectful and, and to focus on the issues, not on people. That is a rule I stole from one of my neighborhood organizations. I did want to say that I support the motion. I would love to work together with the chairs, just to make sure that we create a process that isn't confusing to the public. So I think it's a great solution to have one public hearing instead of trying to have multiple public hearings, because sometimes our legislative process can be a bit inaccessible. So I am supportive of the motion. I see Councilmember Kano in queue again.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, Councilmember Cunningham's articulation of some of the, I think, tones of the conversation, you know, I, I do appreciate that, and, and thank you for re-centering us. This is a very difficult conversation, but also a very hopeful conversation. And so like mitigating those two feelings at the same time is, you know, it's, it's a, it's a good exercise for us as a governing body in the times that we're in right now of deep unrest and division from, you know, specifically coming from the federal government. So I just wanted to say that on that same line, I would appreciate it if folks could take some time to learn the work that the Public Safety Committee has been doing now, if they could ask more questions about the types of changes that we're entertaining and looking at. I'm, I'm asking councilmembers for more support in, in leading certain portions of the agenda of reform. I even looked into, could we have a, a zero policy on, on killings in our department? And I brought that up at our, at the local progress conference, and lots of eyebrows were raised, and, and, you know, there's lots of questions about what that would mean. And, and those are, I think, the kinds of policy change conversations I would like to see happening. I, I would like to see us having more of those discussions with our community, with our constituents, with each other, with our chief, with our mayor, as well as thinking about a roadmap to how do we live in a society with no police departments? I feel like that's kind of the, the big elephant in the room that, that many of us, you know, took a stand on last year as elected officials who were interviewed by some of the advocacy groups who are looking to dramatically rethink community safety in our neighborhoods. And so while I feel like this conversation about the charter amendment and so forth is more about like which suit do we report to, is, is, I'm actually more hungry for a conversation about what's an actual blueprint to get us to a community, a space where we don't have to rely with, to, we don't have to rely on people with guns to keep us safe. So, so with that, I will just say that I appreciate Councilmember Philippe Cunningham's point on that, and, and I want to express and expand that to include the work of the Public Safety Committee. When people are saying, you know, pounding their fessing, we're not doing enough, let's look at the list of things that Linay and I can point to that have been done. We have a separation ordinance. We repealed lurking and, and spitting. We have an opioid task force. MPD is addressing commercial sexual exploitation in ways that is leading the nation. We have an amazing UVISA program. We're, we're doing a lot of really good work, and, and I think part of what we're feeling here is that many of us want to participate in the work of police reform, and I don't want us to leave anyone out of that. That includes our first African-American chief. That includes our first mayor with an open door policy, and includes the body of work that the committee at the public safety level is leading. And so I just want to say that perhaps some of this tension that we're feeling is the fact that like, we're all really excited to be at that table, and when we see that the table's not being created in a way where everyone can participate, then that's where we see some of the things kind of fall, fall off. So I, I appreciate people considering this motion and would be happy to take a vote on it.
Okay, with that, we have no more councilmembers in queue. I will ask the clerk to please call the role on the amendment offered by Councilmember Kano to refer this to a joint meeting of the Intergovernmental Relations Committee and the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee that will take place that first week of August.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the amendment has been adopted. That remove, brings us back to the amended underlying subject matter introduction, and I have Councilmember Gordon next.
Well, thank you very much. This discussion has been very interesting. It's taken us down many twists and turns, and I just want to note that I've been here, this is my fourth term, so I have been on the council three terms before this term, if you can do subtraction. And all those three terms, 12 years, I was vice chair of the Public Safety Committee. So I had a lot of experience up to this point, working with the police and, and understanding how the system operates. It actually took me a while to understand the, this particular provision in the charter. Also, throughout that time, and maybe it's because I'm minority leader, but my father always let me into the mayor's office, so I'm not sure what, what, what that, what that means. But I wanted to mention a couple of things that have come up and just respond to it a little bit. If you're confused about what this might mean, it might help to just think fire chief. Just think fire chief. How, how does the council work with, relate, the mayor work with and relate with the fire chief? What happens when there's a big emergency that involves the fire chief? What happens in your ward about the fire department? Do we get to, it's in my, I want to move a station in our ward? No. So think about that, and I think that's kind of the understanding. This is an alignment of organizational structure that I'm after here, so it's consistent and it's stable. So everybody understands how our government works, and there aren't different departments that have different rules that operate differently, and there's a greater alignment there. And I don't have a, a policy agenda that I'm thinking of with this. It is actually more about process. If you're curious about reform ideas I have, I've certainly written about them. They're in my newsletters. They're probably on my blogs. They're probably published in newspapers. In fact, this was one of them that I have brought up often about this once I discovered it couldn't. And I discovered it really one day when Peter Ginder, the assistant city attorney, was up there. This is probably in 2007 or eight, and I wanted an early warning system, and I didn't understand why the police department wasn't responding to my staff directions like every other department was, about getting the early warning system set up. We could hear about it. We could approve what the early warning system is. This is a system so that there's, people can identify red flags, maybe when officer needs some mental health assistance, or some training, or some work, because they're at risk for police misconduct. And, and we were supposedly going to get it way back then, and we still haven't. And then the city attorney informed me, well, you can move staff directions in your committee, but really what it is because of this charter provision, it's a request to the department, and they're under no legal obligation to fulfill their staff direction. And I'll admit, we sometimes get ignored a little bit by some of the other departments, but it does feel very different when we do a staff direction, and there's a timeline in that. And so that's when I thought, oh, maybe this could be repaired. And actually, what I see this as doing is opening up a door, a door for councilmembers to bring ideas in about police policy, and a door for greater transparency about them and a formality about them once they're set. We did something with, with tasers years ago because the police department wanted to spend a quarter million dollars on tasers. This might have been in 2011 or something. In committee, Public Safety Committee, I was able to stop the quarter million dollars for the tasers, and I said, show us your policy so we understand how they're going to be used. People are really worried. There's horrible stories about what's happened with taser use. Developed the policy, and they actually went to the Civilian Review Authority. That's the, that's the predecessor of our PCOC, Police Conduct Oversight Commission now. They developed a great policy. They brought it in. They told, shared it with us. I clarified with the attorney, can the council approve this policy and pass it? And we'll know. That's the police department's policy. That's up to the chief. So they shared it, and it was a good policy, and so we approved the quarter million dollars. And then we went on our way. And actually, the policy was posted on the police department's website for about six months. And then somehow, it just disappeared. I heard that the ideas got put into their training manual, and it was no longer available, and it was no longer out there, but everybody had the tasers. I'm assuming they're still trying to basically operate under that same policy, but if that had been a policy the council had passed and approved on the recommendation of the chief, it would have been in our records. It would have been on the website. It would have been recorded in council action, and if we wanted to change the policy, we'd come back, we'd discuss it. It would be noticed, and everybody would understand that. And that's what I'm hoping that we could do with this. I know I'm going to get more opportunities, because I'm pretty confident the subject introduction is going to go forward now. Maybe we can even go forward with a unanimous vote. We'll see. But I did want to clarify, there was a question that we talked about a lot on some survey, and it wasn't really about envisioning anything. My, my all-star aide looked up the questionnaire for me to clarify what it actually said, and it said, do you believe that we could ever have a city without police? And my answer was no. I know there are other people who answered yes. I believe the mayor actually answered yes on the questionnaire. And, and I'll admit that if we change the name and had the same general function, I mean, clearly, what I believe we need is to build a support system of trusted people who are seen as a constructive part of the community, without any of them as being hostile. But whether or not we call them police seems secondary, I said in my answer. To eliminate the policing functions, we need to eliminate the need for them and eradicate the root causes of crime and violence. That's going to be a long haul, and there's going to be emergencies, and people are going to need help, and they're going to really want to pool their resources, so when they're in desperate need of help, they can maybe get some. Maybe they're trapped on some gorge by the river or something, and maybe their son is talking about jumping off some tall building. I don't know. But I believe we need people to respond, and, and we need good people to respond, and we, we need to base that on public health and community engagement and a discussion about it. And I believe that if we have a more active role, if we welcome our responsibility to get engaged in this as a council, it'll open the door for our ideas, but it'll also open the door for the community's ideas. Because when community ideas come forward, right now, they maybe have a chance to get the chief to go along with it, or the mayor, but with other the door for the community's ideas. Because when community ideas come forward, right now, they maybe have a chance to get the chief to go along with it or the mayor, but with other departments and other areas, they can come and talk to us individually, one by one, and start to build some support for those ideas. We are a gateway to them so that they can get in and make the policy. I want us to open the doors so that we can get all of their great ideas and ours, vet them like we do other policies and approve them in a transparent and accountable way. And I think that this little tweak to the charter can do that. And finally, in my last 20 seconds, I have no doubt in my mind at all that our police chief couldn't operate under such a system. Rondo would be so skilled and so good at working with this council and working with the chair and understanding it immediately, just like our, just like our fire chief was and is and our, and our public works director. I know this would work for him. I also know it would put him in a really awkward spot to say, oh, please, police chief, could you choose between whether you want the council or the mayor in charge and give us your honest opinion in the position that he's in? So I actually think it's kind of appropriate that we let him have a little space around this and it's more appropriate that we talk about it and we engage and we talk to our constituents about it to find out what we think is best. And I know he's going to make it work either way and any professional police chief who we'd ever appoint could do so as well. Sorry, I went over.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm in queue and I just have a couple of things to say, but before I do, I want to tell a story. I wasn't planning to do this, but it's been inspired by things that people have said. I worked really hard to become the president of the city council and you could take how many hours you spoke with me and the questions you asked me and multiply them by 12 to determine a measure of that. And the first day of the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee meeting, I walked in and I stood back there next to my policy aide, Ron Harris, and the two of us turned to each other and said, it was all worth it. I am so inspired by the leadership of our current Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. And then it got even better because the very first thing the committee did was go out into the community, probably for the first time ever, and center community in the conversation that we have to have about how we're going to do a better job around public safety in our community. The lack of trust, the fear, the racial violence are real. And this is a way to not solve those problems, but to give us a tool to empower our constituents and councilmembers to be a direct part of setting that kind of policy. So that's why I support starting this conversation. And I feel again compelled to remind folks who are following along that this is the beginning of a process to give you a vote and a voice about how you want our system of government to work around public safety and policing. And I think based on my experience, my constituents will welcome that chance to vote directly. And if they vote no, I will respectfully continue to work with the powers that we do have to make change. So I have Councilmember Ellison next. Thank you.
I just wanted to, I'll keep it brief, say that we shouldn't have policy that hinges on the individual temperaments of a mayor or a chief, right? We should have policy that is systemic. And while, you know, I have a lot of respect for the mayor and when he sits here and he says that, hey, I'm excited to collaborate with you all, I believe this mayor when he says that, right? I believe this police chief and trust this police chief when he says he wants to work with the council and collaborate. But in the future, there will eventually be a different council member for the fifth ward, right? Who I may disagree with, who I may not trust even, right? There may be, there will be a different mayor, there will be a different police chief who I may disagree with and not trust. And I hope that we can build sort of a systemic infrastructure that does not leave our constituents sort of at the mercy, right, of the individual temperaments of elected officials. I don't think that that's what, I don't think that that's what any of us signed up to do. And so, you know, again, I just want to reiterate, that's why I'm supporting that we have this conversation. And as the, and as the Madam President indicated, if we hand this question to the constituents and they say overwhelmingly, nah, we would like it, you know, it's fine, then that's a decision that we can all respect as well. And so, yeah, just wanted to, just wanted to name that.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, since Councilmember Gordon brought it up, you know, I did want to say that I did respond to the question of, do you believe you can live in a world without police? And I affirmatively responded and still stand by that answer today. I think that we need to, whoever answered yes, we should team up and we should start thinking about that. I think that that's, for me, a really intuitive way to lead some of the work that we know is deeply embedded in institutions around how community safety has been defined by the legacies of colonization and slavery. And while I can recognize that some of our police officers are doing a great job, some of them have more challenges, that some community members want more police in their neighborhood and others want less, I want to see if we can hold that conversation together and not be, you know, pigeonholed as crazy people or something like that. But how do we actually bring some grounded strategies to what that would mean and to reconstructing our society in ways that we don't have to carry the weight of the past but lead with what we believe is hopeful for the future? So I wanted to just, you know, acknowledge that it's really interesting to be in a space where the charter amendment issue has been brought forward when the question that I heard from constituents and residents last year was, you know, will you support living in a world with no police? And so it's interesting for me to be in the space of trying to kind of change tracks a little bit as we were hoping to dig deeper on those other questions, I thought, you know, as a council. It doesn't mean we can't do both, but I wanted to say that I do appreciate councilmembers being open to having the Public Safety Committee be a part of these conversations moving forward, that there's an expressly codified way to continue to do that work and that I am very confident that we can find some ways to continue to work on the current structures we have to make change while entertaining new structures. And I really look forward to getting a lot of answers to the many questions that are being proposed about what this change would actually entail, what it would mean, and to be able to actually communicate that to residents so we can clearly delineate between a logistical change of like which suit does the, do the cops report to versus here are deeply systemic changes that we know will result in the changes that folks want to see. So thank you all for the discussion and the debate this morning.
Thank you. That is the last person in queue, so I will ask the clerk to please call the roll on the item, which is subject matter introduction as listed in the agenda.
Councilmember Palmasano.
No.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes and 2 ayes.
That carries and it is adopted and referred to a joint meeting of the Intergovernmental Relations and Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee for the next cycle for review and recommendation. That is the last, no, that is not the last item. And we also have, we have a closed session after this as well. The next order of business is unfinished business and we have a charter amendment proposed by ordinance related to debt for capital expenditures. Mr. Clerk, you have an update for us on this item?
Madam President, with my apologies, there's been so much on charter amendments lately that I made an error, admitting it publicly of course, here. And that is that we cannot vote on this in final form today. The process by which this was brought forward is by ordinance, meaning the Charter Commission started the clock when they referred it back to you. Under the statute subdivision seven, you now must conduct a public hearing on that proposal. So this also needs to be referred to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee at its next meeting on August 1st for the purpose of conducting a public hearing before it can be finally considered enacted on by the council.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So the Councilmember Gordon moved to refer this item to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the proposal to amend the city charter related to debt for capital expenditures. This would go to IGR next cycle and return back to the city council on Friday, August 17th. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries, the proposed charter amendment is referred to the IGR committee in the next cycle. The next order of business is new business. This item is a proposed charter amendment that was initiated by the Charter Commission to be submitted to the voters at the November general election. This proposal is to remove references to liquor license regulations in the charter. The Charter Commission conducted its public hearing and received favorable testimony, which is linked in our agenda and available to the public online. The Charter Commission has referred this proposal to the council and we have the statutory responsibility for studying the ballot language that will be submitted to voters. So the motion I will make is to refer the proposal to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee to formulate recommended ballot language. Is there a motion?
No.
I moved it. There's a second, sorry. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries, the proposed charter amendment is referred to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee at the next cycle. That completes the business items on our printed agenda. Are there any announcements from councilmembers? I don't see any. We are, we'll be adjourning to a closed session to discuss litigation matters listed on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn to that closed meeting?
No moves.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries, we are adjourned. Thank you so much and thank you to my colleagues for such a robust and respectful conversation.